John Eichman.
If you'd all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have two upcoming meeting dates, one on September 6th and one on September 20th. And the next item on our agenda is usually to go over the approval of minutes, but we have several board members. You notice we're kind of a small crew right now. Several board members are recused from the first two items on our agenda, so I'll revisit Pam, the approval of the minutes, after they rejoin us. So the first item on our agenda tonight is a neg deck for Global Foundries US 2 LLC eight lot subdivision and the IBM Corporation groundwater remediation system separation. So I guess, do all of you have a copy of the neg deck?
No.
Is that something, Michelle, do we have a couple of extra copies? Just in case you have questions, I guess as we go along?
I have that.
What's that?
I have a copy.
Okay.
Do you have, Michelle?
I'll go make a, I'll make a copy.
I have a copy here.
Because I'm going to need one to write on.
That, that, I mean, I get, well.
I'll, I'll give, I can give them mine and I'll go.
That's fine, okay. So before we offer the neg deck, I guess,
That's an extra.
Scott and Pete and Michelle, is there anything that has changed or anything we need to go over before we offer the neg deck? Okay.
No.
All right, so I know this may be the first one that you've heard, is that right? Or have we done neg decks before while you were?
No, he.
This is my first.
First one, okay, all right.
Yeah, yeah, he hasn't had the pleasure.
So basically what we do with these, with resolutions, usually one of the, any of the board members will read them and offer the resolution. With the neg deck, I typically read through them. I don't read them word for word, I'll do my best to skim through it, but again, if anybody has questions as we go, if you want to ask them, that's fine, or if you want to hold them till the end, we can have a brief discussion before we vote on it, and that's fine as well. But this negative declaration is for the Global Foundries US 2 LLC eight lot subdivision and IBM Corporation groundwater remediation system separation. The proposed action results in the subdivision of a 458 acre former IBM campus parcel into eight new lots and four road parcels. And the second part of this application, the IBM portion, results in the construction of three groundwater treatment buildings on the site that total approximately 7,100 square feet. That's all three buildings added together. And it will separate IBM's remediation treatment systems from the Global Foundries infrastructure. Both of these proposed actions were unlisted under SEACR, and we reviewed a full EAF as well as supplemental Part III information in making our SEACR determination. We identified 15 environmental issues as relevant and looked at them as we went through these applications. I'll just run down the 15 quickly right now, and then we'll go back and we'll summarize them each in a little more detail. So, starting with land use and zoning, groundwater extraction and treatment, wastewater, impervious cover, parking usage, environmental restrictions, visual character, geological features, historic and archaeological resources, stormwater, downstream flooding, air quality, plants and animals, transportation and energy consumption. So that was 15 things. The first one, coming back and just talking a little bit more in detail, land use zoning and public policy. As we mentioned, the subdivision portion of the application, sorry, the subdivision application results in eight new lots and four road parcels in a 458 acre IBM campus. The smallest parcel is about 13 acres, the largest is about 100. And basically, the road parcels will be owned by the lots with frontage on them until or unless they are dedicated to the town of East Fishkill. And all future proposed redevelopment of the eight newly created lots would be subject to site-specific SEACR. So at this time, no new uses or changes of uses are proposed on the site as part of the subdivision. And with the exception of one building that will need minor construction per state building codes to exist across two of the new lots, the proposed subdivision would not involve construction or physical alteration of the land, and would not result in any significant adverse impacts to land use zoning or public policy. That's the subdivision portion. So for this first one, when we look at the treatment buildings, the proposed action also includes the three buildings for groundwater treatment. Utility buildings are to be constructed to separate IBM's groundwater remediation treatment systems from the Global Foundries infrastructure, and are consistent with the industrial character of the site. The groundwater remediation currently occurs on the site at Building 316, and this is the last paragraph of that section, and is also occupied by Global Foundries infrastructure. The proposed new buildings would allow IBM to continue to treat the groundwater contamination in the separate buildings from Global Foundries infrastructure, and the proposed uses in the three groundwater treatment facility buildings would be consistent with the existing groundwater remediation use that currently occurs on the site. All three GTF buildings, groundwater treatment facility buildings, excuse me, would be located and designed to comply with the Town Zoning Code, and therefore, again, with the second portion of the application, the second application, no significant adverse impacts to land use zoning or public policy would result from the proposed project. The second item issued, identified as relevant, was groundwater. The subdivision, proposed subdivision does not involve any groundwater, and therefore would not have any significant adverse impact. That's for the subdivision portion when we talk about the groundwater treatment. IBM has been pumping and treating groundwater from onsite production wells for over 35 years as an integral component of the Groundwater Corrective Action Program regulated by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation under the site's six NYKKRR Part 373 R-CRA permit. This program is in place to contain and remove chemicals present in the groundwater at the site. Historically, the extracted groundwater is treated and reused as production water in other site operations, and ultimately discharged through the site's treatment plant, B 325 wastewater treatment facility, to the Gildersleeve Brook under a State Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, or SFEEDYs, permit. Under the proposed action, groundwater would continue to be pumped and treated as the three standalone GTF buildings in the same manner that the current building performs this service, and there's no anticipated change to the corrective action program currently proposed with this act, I'm sorry, no change to the corrective action program with this action. So accordingly, no significant adverse impacts as a result of groundwater extraction and treatment are expected for this project. Moving on to wastewater, with regard to the subdivision, the proposed action involves the formation of the Global Foundries Transportation Corporation for the existing wastewater treatment facility known as Building B 325. The formation of the Global Foundries Transport Corporation will allow the town to provide sanitary sewer to a small number of existing businesses along the Route 52 corridor. The estimated additional sanitary discharge from other nearby uses through service at Building B 325 for treatment is an average of about .2 million gallons per day, or 200,000 gallons per day, up to a maximum peak flow of .54 MGD as more parcels are brought online. The sanitary, this sanitary discharge is not anticipated to have a significant adverse impact on the surface waters, and any changes to the current uses within or site plans of the newly created subdivision parcels will require SEACR study, which will include analysis and review of wastewater impacts. Therefore, the proposed subdivision would not be expected to result in any significant adverse wastewater impacts. Moving on, within wastewater to the groundwater treatment buildings. A detailed analysis of the existing groundwater treatment resulted in a review of how much water is extracted, now groundwater today, and treated. So our averages ranged from .714, which is the most current year, to a maximum of about a million gallons per day, maybe 1.1 million gallons per day. And the treated, the treated water, again, is reused in a current manufacturing process. And I know I'm kind of paraphrasing here, so we can go back and answer questions if need be. Within that, within that manufacturing process, the water that's been treated through the groundwater pumping goes through the manufacturing reuse, and then is treated again at the wastewater treatment plant before being discharged into the Brook. That's all under existing permits. And both applicants have come to the board with a letter of intent stating that they will continue that process. So there's no anticipated change to the, to the wastewater outflows with either of these applications. And specifically, there'll be some conditioning within the resolution to ensure that that continues to take place. Since neither the site plan nor new treatment facilities will change the quality or volume of existing wastewater outflows, no significant adverse impacts are expected to result from the continued water usage, treatment, and discharge at the site. Under number four, we, the item was identified as impervious cover. This was basically, the subdivision itself has no change to the impervious cover of the site, so no adverse actions for the subdivision. One of the groundwater treatment buildings that are, that's being constructed does result in approximately 0.2 acres of increased impervious surface, and both applicants, again, have agreed that they can and will replace a portion of the existing pavement with pervious surface again. So net-net, no new change to the impervious surface as a result of either of these actions. With regard to parking, we've done a thorough review of all buildings on the site, both where they are and what their parking needs are, and where they end up within each lot. And the applicant has agreed, Global Foundries specifically, has agreed that there'll be a cross-parking agreement, so that any need for parking from any one parcel to another, there would be shared parking and cross-access easements to allow that parking. The only exception to that was specifically Lot 5, where no one from other lots would park on Lot 5, but they may need additional parking for Lot 5. So the cross-access, cross-parking agreement for Lot 5 will be in one direction only, and that's Lot 5 being able to use the others. And if I have any of the lot numbers wrong or anything, please shout out. That's basically the parking analysis.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. The parking analysis showed that we have a total of 7,848 spaces currently at the site. That's a little bit more, Michelle, I don't remember exactly how many more than what was actually needed. And currently, the site only uses about 2,300 of those 7,800 spots. With regard to the groundwater treatment buildings, the construction of one of the buildings does, is going to be in a place that has existing parking. It loses about 16 parking spaces. And the construction of the building that will cause new impervious surface adds about two parking spaces. So net-net, there's a reduction of 14 parking spaces, knowing there's 7,800 and some at the site. Again, it's a nominal amount, and no adverse impacts as a result of parking are expected with the cross-access and cross-parking agreements in place. The next item identified is environmental restrictions and hazardous materials. With regard to the subdivision, the site has a protracted history of industrial use, storage, and transportation of chemicals and related soil and groundwater contamination. As described above, a groundwater remediation program regulated by the New York State DEC is currently underway at the site. And in addition, the EAF identifies the related deed restrictions and areas of the site plan, sorry, areas of the site that are restricted for certain uses or activities due to existing contamination or the potential for air quality impacts. Monitoring and treatment facilities are described on the subdivision plans and in the EAF, and this site is also governed by a management plan that details provisions necessary for any site disturbance either to soil or groundwater. In addition, the EAF identifies the portion of the site that is restricted to manufacturing uses due to air quality concerns, and no changes to the existing restrictions would occur as a result of the proposed subdivision. So accordingly, with regard to the subdivision, no significant adverse impacts as a result of environmental restrictions or air quality are expected for this project. The neg deck continues to outline, there's a number of specific measures and actions in place because of what's currently occurring at the site, outlined and delineated kind of in the middle of Page 8. And any spill under the program is required to be reported to site security, where there are hazmat-trained emergency response technicians 24/7 that would respond to all incidents and assume control of the site to assist in whatever additional protection to human health and the environment are required. This is all in accordance, and you can see as you look at the, as you look at the bullet points, there's a lot of different agencies, government agencies, that get involved in what has to be done to monitor this site. So there's no anticipated change to any of that monitoring or any of the emergency response expectations for the site, and therefore no adverse hazardous material impacts would be anticipated just based on the subdivision. So regardless of the subdivision, all the existing emergency response and protection will remain in place. Specifically, with regard to the groundwater treatment buildings, the three GTFs are proposed to be constructed to separate the groundwater. IBM is currently conducting the long-term remediation program, and the remediation program includes the pumping of groundwater with treatment at Building 316 to a central carbon treatment system. So remember, with the three new buildings, it's still going to be the same type of treatment system for the materials being taken out of the groundwater, and no changes to this program, aside from the location of the treatment facilities result from this project. Therefore, no significant adverse environmental impacts to environmental restrictions or hazardous materials would result. Number, the seventh item identified was visual character. The proposed subdivision would not involve construction or physical alteration of the land surface, and would not result in any changes to the visual character of the site, and therefore, no significant adverse impacts to visual character would result from the proposed subdivision. Under visual character for the groundwater treatment buildings, I've already described the, the size of the buildings, and there are three buildings there. We had all three buildings, as part of our hearing process, we had the elevations presented through the planning board. The architectural review board also reviewed and approved the buildings. These buildings are interior to the site. They are typically adjacent to higher buildings, so not a lot of visibility from anywhere external to the site. And based upon that, the proposed GTS would be smaller in height than most existing buildings on the campus, and due to the industrial character of the site and the larger intervening buildings and infrastructure, the proposed buildings would be negligibly visible, and no significant, sorry, no significant adverse impacts to the visual character of the site from the proposed GTF buildings would be expected. The next item we identified was geological features. Again, the subdivision does not involve any construction or physical alteration of the land surface, and therefore will have no impact on geological features. And the one building that's being constructed on grass as opposed to pavement was in a portion of the site where there's already been previous disturbance, and therefore, we don't expect and should not have any geological features impacted due to the construction of the one building that will not already be constructed over what's existing pavement. With regard to the next item, historic and archaeological resources, again, the subdivision does not involve alteration of the land and will not impact historic or archaeological resources. And the groundwater treatment buildings, again, are either being constructed on two sites that have already, already are paved over, and the other, the third site for pumping well one is in a location that's already been disturbed previously. The 10th item we identified was stormwater. With regard to the subdivision application, the proposed subdivision would not result in any new construction or physical alteration of the site. Therefore, the proposed subdivision would not result in any significant adverse stormwater impacts. With regard to the groundwater treatment buildings and stormwater, the PW1 GTF building will be designed with stormwater management measures that will reduce the post-development stormwater runoff to be less than or equal to the pre-development stormwater runoff, and includes reclamation or removal of an equivalent amount of impervious area in another part of the site. The PW2 and PW25 groundwater treatment facilities will result in no change to stormwater runoff because they're already being constructed over existing impervious surface. And so the net effect of the proposed project will be zero increase in stormwater runoff from the site, and no adverse impact on stormwater impacts as, stormwater is expected. The 11th item we identified is downstream flooding. With regard to the subdivision, the proposed subdivision does not involve construction or physical alteration of the land surface, and therefore will have no impact on flooding. With regard to the groundwater treatment buildings, the proposed GTF buildings would reuse treated groundwater as production water in the Global Foundries operations. The flow range of extraction and treatment is noted as approximately .6 million gallons per day, and 1 million gallons per day. It is known that the site is situated in close proximity to the Lake City neighborhood. Lake City residents have expressed concerns with regard to frequent flooding of their properties, even under relatively small storm events, which seem to have been exacerbated over time by the continued off-site development within the larger Gildersleeve watershed, resulting in additional discharges to the Gildersleeve Brook. As a result, the joint applicants submitted a letter of intent to continue with the current utilization of the treated groundwater in the chip manufacturing process. So the net effect will be no increase to the discharge that is currently permitted within the area immediately downstream from the site, and the proposed action will not change the amount of discharge to the sites receiving water bodies, and therefore, no significant adverse flooding impacts would be expected to occur as a result of the three new groundwater treatment facilities. And again, you know, I know we talked about this, but it's not that it's going to improve the situation, it just shouldn't worsen the situation. So the, the amount of discharge will, will remain the same. 12th item we identified is air quality. With regard to the subdivision, the proposed subdivision would not result in any changes to existing conditions, nor would it result in any construction or physical alteration to the site that would have any state-regulated air emission source. The applicant has been required to show air-sensitive areas or development restrictions due to air quality and other environmental hazards on the subdivision plat. Therefore, the proposed subdivision would not have any significant adverse to impacts, sorry, any significant adverse impacts to air quality. With regard to the groundwater treatment buildings, the proposed GTFs would not result in any changes to existing conditions, nor have any state-regulated air emission source. Therefore, the proposed GTFs would not have any significant adverse impacts to air quality. The 13th item we identified was plants and animals. With regard to the subdivision, the proposed action does not involve construction or physical alteration of the land surface, again, with the exception of the one building, but that's an existing building, and therefore will not, will have no impact on plants and animals. And likewise, the groundwater treatment buildings, construction of the PW1 GTF building will result in the loss of a small amount of grassed vegetation at the PW1 GTF building site, but this loss will be mitigated by reclaiming an equivalent amount of impervious area at another part of the site. The proposed PW1 GTF building will be located within the developed portion of the Global Foundries industrial campus. It would not be expected to have a significant adverse impact on plants and animals. I don't think we have a sentence in here about the other two, but the other two are being built on existing parking lots, so with regard to plants and animals, there, there wasn't study done for those. The 14th item was transportation. With regard to the subdivision, the proposed action does not involve alteration of the land uses and will not generate any new traffic or alter existing traffic patterns. Therefore, no adverse impact on traffic is expected as a result of the subdivision. With regard to the groundwater treatment buildings, PW1 would add two new parking spaces, and there would be the elimination of three spaces at the site to accommodate the small number of employees that may need to visit the site during operations. This construction of the PW2 GTF would result in the elimination of 16 parking spaces. PW2 GTF and PW25 GTF are unmanned operations with occasional visits from technicians who will use nearby parking, existing parking spaces. The number of vehicle trips generated by the proposed GTFs would be negligible as compared to the full traffic on, say, Route 52 or Lime Kiln Road, and no significant adverse impacts to transportation would result from the proposed GTF buildings. The last item we identified was energy consumption. With regard to the subdivision, the proposed action does not involve alteration of the land uses, and no new energy demand would be generated. Therefore, they will have no impact on energy consumption. The groundwater treatment buildings, the proposed action will involve construction of three standalone GTF buildings with a combined energy demand of less than 2,500 megawatt-hours per year. Therefore, the proposed GTF buildings would not be expected to have a significant adverse impact on energy consumption. There were no other issues or impacts identified as a result of the proposed action, and I'll just pause there for a second. Does anybody, I know I glossed over some of the more technical portions of the document that describe the, some in more depth, some of the analysis we went through specifically on the groundwater and the wastewater, but does anybody have any questions? Changes, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the negative declaration?
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, and any abstentions? Okay. Michelle, did I miss anything specific or anything you need to call out?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is a decision for Global Foundries eight lots on Route 52 at Lime Kiln.
Can we take a break now?
Yes, I'd like to take a break now, that's okay.
All right. I don't know how.
I'm going to drink some water, too.
Drink, drink some water, yeah, please. Okay. Resolution of the preliminary subdivision approval, Global Foundries subdivision. Name of the applicant, Global Foundries US 2 LLC, location 2070 Route 52 and Lime Kiln Road. Resolution offered by planning board member John Cutler, whereas the applicant has applied for subdivision approval to create a total of eight building lots, and whereas this application is the first filed under Section 194-67.3, seeking a special permit to create new lots on a site generator than 100, greater than 150 acres within the I-1 zoning district, and whereas the purpose of this special permit is to give flexibility to the planning board to approve the division of already improved property to foster economic development. And whereas, the intent of this permit is also to allow previous approved site plans to continue to be utilized, even though the site may be divided into multiple lots. And whereas, the applicant filed an application for subdivision approval under this special permit on the 29th day of April, and whereas, the planning board circulated for lead agency status and declared themselves to be lead agency on the 5th day of July 2016 without objection. Whereas, a public hearing was duly advertised and held on July 5th, 2016, and continued to August 2nd, 2016, when it was closed. Whereas, the planning board, previously on August 16th, 2016, adopted a neg declaration under SEACR with respect to this application. Whereas, after due deliberation and review of the professional memorandums and comments submitted, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants a special permit pursuant to Section 194-67 dot 3 of the zoning ordinance and preliminary subdivision approval for an eight lot subdivision on a map entitled 2070 Route 52 Preliminary Plat Subdivision, Global Foundries US 2 LLC dated April 1st, 2016, as prepared by the Chasen Engineering Land Surveying and Landscape Architecture Company, DPC. Said map revised through August 11th, 2016. And be it further resolved that this preliminary subdivision approval and grant of special permit is subject to the following conditions which must be satisfied prior to consideration of the final approval by this board. Number one, compliance with this with and satisfaction of the comments contained in the following review letters by this board's consultants. Morris Associates PLLC dated July 28th, 2016. HVE, which are a traffic consultant, dated August 15th, 2016. Town planners' comments dated May 6th, 2016. And town engineers' comment, do we have a date?
Do you have formal comments?
No, my comments are incorporated into the other professionals.
We'll strike letter D.
Strike, okay, awesome.
Thank you, Scott.
Number two, approval by the town board of the water district on a water improvement area to provide, provide public water to the separate lots by virtue of a partial assignment by the applicant to the town of a quantity of water, 500,000 GPD, without take or pay provisions to satisfy, satisfaction of the town board, Route 52 Commercial Water District. Number three, establishment of a transportation corporation with the consent of the town board for sewage disposal with initial reserve capital, capacity of 200,000 GPD for the Route 52 Sewer Improvement Area, and 50,000 GPD for the John J Sewer Improvement Area, and sufficient capacity to service all of the lots created herein. Number four, a reciprocal easement agreement in a form acceptable to the town attorney, providing for the operation of the entire site as one despite this subdivision in accordance with the previously approved site plan, with provisions for all activities of the site, including but not limited to parking, drainage, lighting, access, stormwater, et cetera. Number five, offers to the, of dedication of the proposed roads in a form acceptable to the town attorney, and the terms approved by the town board. Six, written agreement continuing the existing first responder obligations of the site owner as to hazardous materials, fire, and EMT. Seven, approval of agreement between the applicant and IBM with respect to the treatment of groundwater on the site through the wastewater treatment plant as to a length of term and capacities and alternate discharge. Eight, review and approval of the assignment of any site operation obligations with other agencies such as New York State DOT as to traffic lights, et cetera. Nine, South Road will be immediately offered for dedication to the town at the town's option under terms to be agreed to. Ten, road maintenance agreement inclusive of all newly created lots until each road is accepted as a public highways, and see number five. Number 11, demolition of any building crossing a newly created lot prior to the final approval, except building number 309 and 310, which shall have a firewall constructed on the property line in accordance with the New York State Building Code. Twelve, prior to the Twelve, prior to the final approval, all lots will be shown to be serviced by a separate utility supplies, electric and gas, not within the jurisdiction of the board, but a concern applicant will address. Number 13, all requirements of previously approved site plan will be continued and maintained. Fourteen, all restricted areas on the site for both soil contamination or air quality issues to be shown clearly on a subdivision map with restrictions on the plan. Fifteen, the final plat will indicate any required setbacks from the hydrogen storage facility.
Okay, pause there for a second.
Okay, you have some more.
So, number one, we struck letter D. Scott, numbers two and three, are those correct? Three specifically, it seemed like it, initial reserve capacity of 200,000 gallons per day for the Route 52 Sewer Improvement and 50,000 gallons per day for the John J Sewer Improvement Area, are those two separate things? So it's two?
Two separate things.
Yeah.
Okay. And is that part of the 500 under number two, or are they, they? Separate?
Well, one is sewer and one is water.
Oh, clearly I can't read today.
Yeah, there are two different numbers that currently don't reconcile.
Okay, so number three is intending to be a total of 250?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a copy of the resolution? Do you have any?
No.
Yeah, let's share a copy with you, because if you have questions, before we finalize this, this is the time where we tweak conditions and things like that. Scott, did we, did we capture the roads correctly? I know there was some concern that we didn't want there to be an assumption that the town must take all of the roads?
Yeah, I thought it was just a condition.
Okay. It's the rewording of number 10, I think, until each road is accepted?
Yes. It refers back to five.
And you guys, you can come up to the podium if you want, if you have questions or you want to ask questions or share comments, it's fine.
And then the other part was?
You're good. Okay.
The other part was six, which then included the traffic lights.
So number six?
So five, six, and 10 are all related. And I think that captures everything.
Okay.
Six, the hazardous materials fire and EMT?
I'm sorry. Error, the wrong one. Five?
Five, nine, and 10?
Nine, yes, five, nine, and 10, sorry.
And they look right?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members as the applicant is looking over the conditions? Michelle?
Just in the first, very first whereas clause, on the first page, it says subdivision approval to create a total of eight building lots, I think we should say?
And four roads?
Yeah.
And four road parcels?
Correct.
Okay. Any other corrections on the other beginning part? I had under the, one, two, three, four, five, fifth, fifth whereas, I added 2016 after April. And under the seventh whereas, changed continue to continued with a D. Minor stuff, just little things. Michelle, with regard to number four, the reciprocal easements, was there anything else in the neg deck, any other easements prescribed in the neg deck? I don't think there were, but just, we've got parking, drainage, lighting, which we probably didn't address in the neg deck, but lighting, access, and stormwater?
I think that's it.
Anything specific that we called out? Signs. Okay. So we may have a sign, what you're saying is we may have a sign for lot three on lot two or something like that?
Correct.
Yes, wherever parcels have the road frontage may have the ability, every parcel should be able, okay, if they choose.
If, exactly.
Okay.
The rest of this goes on to give the conditions of the actual, what we're waiving as a result of issuing a special permit, it gives us purview to waive certain things.
Okay.
So there's a little bit more to the rest of this when we say we're ready to continue.
Okay. Got you.
Just bear with us, folks, the applicant is reviewing the conditions. I'm, I need you to come up to them, we can't hear you, so.
We're up to number eight.
Okay, any questions so far?
Yeah, Scott, I guess for you, the establishment of a transportation corporation with the consent of the town board?
Is this item three?
Number three, right.
Okay.
Establishment of a transportation corporation with the consent of the town board for sewage disposal with initial reserve capacity of 200 K gallons per day for the Route 52 Sewer Improvement Area and 50 K for John J Improvement Area. Wasn't John J included in the sewer improvement area? Or are you saying they're two separate?
That was the 200,000 that you had dedicated to the back of your property.
Okay.
And then we had 50 dedicated to the town's district.
So what about?
I understand.
So what about the sewer improvement area that we said we're going to cover, John J, the Sports Dome?
That's in the town's 50. And the 200 is for your onsite future development.
Okay, so the 50 includes John J, the sewer, the Sports Dome complex and the retail strip mall, then?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, you're good enough with that number, then?
Yes.
Okay. Let's keep reading.
Because keep in mind, it's initial, those are the initial numbers, because you have certain restrictions in your infrastructure that have to be worked out to go beyond that.
Okay, so you're, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with, that includes the sewer improvement area that we talked about?
Yeah, and those are the numbers that went to the board health.
Health department, okay.
Scott, is there any clarifying language you would want to put in here? Are you comfortable with the way it's worded? Are you both comfortable with the way it's worded?
Again, we said initial.
Okay.
I mean, it's subject to change down the road depending on, you know, what comes along.
Okay.
So do we need to clarify initial, then, or you're?
The attorney was good with it, so, if you're good with it.
Well, we could, we could add initial in front of the 50,000 as well, because it says initial reserve capacity of 200,000 for the sewer improvement area.
Well, the initial carries for both, yeah, if you want to clarify that.
I'll go ahead and add it in, just so it's clear, and initial reserve capacity of 50,000.
Okay.
Okay, that's, you got any recommendations for that, then, other than?
For that one, we just did, no, no.
Did you hear us mention that we added the word signage as an additional item under number four?
No.
So what that would mean is that as part of your reciprocal agreements for the eight lots, that any of the eight would be able to have a sign on a different lot, depending on where road frontage is and things like that at the time?
Okay.
So as you develop those agreements, you'll work with the town attorney, parking, cross access, all of that, signage will be another agreement you would need between the lots.
Okay.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, with that.
Right. Number eight, I think there was the discussion of a couple of traffic lights need to become operational, at least one of them, right? That's, right, right.
Okay.
Well, I think we just wanted the clarification of who's responsible, who owns, and I think that's the language that's incorporated here.
Says review and approval of the assignment of any site operation obligations with other agencies.
Before final.
Okay.
South. Are you okay with that, number nine?
Yeah, I mean, do you think on number nine, then, Scott, that you and the town attorney want to go put in some more definition as to what triggers the transfer to the town for South Drive?
I think that has to be a town board purview, not a planning board.
Well, it says it's immediately offered, but it's up to the town's discretion to actually accept the application.
Okay.
So it triggers whenever the town deems it to be fit or necessary.
Okay, but it's my belief right now that the trigger point will be when the Sports Dome complex opens, is that your understanding?
Yes, it wouldn't be before that.
Before that?
It wouldn't be before that.
Okay.
If that's your concern, it wouldn't be, not be before that.
Okay, yeah, that's my concern.
I think we're all confident in that, yes.
Okay.
Any change in the language for that one, or okay with that one?
No, I'm good with it as long as you are, Scott.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not sure what it says.
I think that's just saying that the people that front on the lots that are owning, or front on the roads that are owning them need to maintain them, I think is.
Demolition of any building crossing a newly created lot.
The only thing is, I think we identified another one that it crosses. Well, Scott, on number 11, demolition of any building crossing a newly created lot prior to final approval except 309 and 310, which will have a firewall constructed on the property.
Mm-hmm. Is that same, all right.
What about, do we need to say the same thing for 320A and B?
I think these are the two buildings that you brought up prior that were discussed, 309 and 310.
So 320A and B are having what done with them?
There's going to need to be a firewall constructed on those two as well.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay. So 309 and 310 is accurate?
Yep.
And you want us to add 320 and?
Yeah, I mean, just to be consistent, right? So 320A and 320A link with building 323.
323.
Right.
So 309 and 310 are linked, and we'll need the firewall, and then 320A and 320B will need a firewall, same reason?
Right.
Because they're crossing a subdivision line?
Correct. So it's totally two buildings that are affected, isn't that right?
So we've got this crossing, 309, 310.
Well, it's technically two structures, they have to build the firewall, because you can't have one building.
It's really this section right here, the link.
It's state building, so they have to have the firewalls and cross a lot longer.
Yeah, but this is going, this is going to be, this is going to be taken down up to here.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right. So as long as you feel we have it covered.
310's there, so it's.
You see it?
So.
This connected.
Another one, and I'm talking about here.
Here, so there's going to have to be a firewall constructed, because this dark line is a lot.
There's no linkage here.
I'm worried about this. And this will remain right here, this section right in here.
So there's really four points of contact. This one, this one, this one, and this one between these buildings and one.
But this one will disappear when I take it down. This one will go away. 320B.
So we already add that, right?
Mm-hmm, so we have to add that. 320A and 3. So the demolition of any building crossing a newly created lot line prior to final approval except building number 309, building numbers 309 and 310, and then 320A and 320B. So what this is doing is restricting you from any construction or building or demolition on site, with the exception of those two firewalls that need to be built.
And then I'd just like to add also, after firewall and proper egress.
Firewall and?
Proper egress.
Proper egress, okay. And again, assuming, you know, if the New York State Building Code requires something additional, you need to comply with the code.
Right.
So this gives you the ability to comply with the code prior to the granting of the final subdivision.
Okay.
Because normally there'd be no building on site when something's, pending application, pending map signing.
Mm-hmm, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Scott, do we need to say anything about building permits and being able to pull building permits while this is in preliminary approval to do this construction? Or is that assumed?
They're saying you've got to build the firewall before approval, final approval.
Yeah, clarification, stated.
Get the clarification.
You've got to pull permit in accordance with building codes, I don't know if that's just inherently implied there.
Okay.
In accordance with the New York State Building.
So we wanted to back up just a second.
Sure.
And so if we're reading this correctly, or you can correct us, it's saying that prior to final approval, any firewalls will need to be installed? Is that, are we reading that correctly?
Yes, it's telling you you can't do any other construction or alteration of the site except to comply with New York State Building Code prior to filing the subdivision after getting final approval. Because you need to have those buildings up to?
Compliance.
And in compliance with New York State Building Code before you can move forward.
Before final approval.
Right.
But you are, the demolition of a building is a ways out, right?
Yeah, it's probably within a, the demolition of the two buildings there is probably about a year off from the commencement of the subdivision.
Or the, or the, from, from about this time, about, it's about a year out.
Right. So, Scott, would I need to put the, if I'm going to be demolished in the building, which would eliminate the link, do I need to have the firewall built in those buildings?
So are you going to have filed the subdivision prior to demolition?
That was the plan, yes.
But they would, but the building would be marked for demolition?
But the building would be earmarked for demolition.
Right, yeah, I think.
It's a catch-22 here, I don't see how they progress with the demolition.
I think you have to meet building.
Without getting final.
Right.
It would have to be some period of time, some fixed period of time, I thought that's what we had discussed. Do you recall, Michelle, I thought we had put a?
Well, but what if plans change and then it's not going to be demolished? Now we've allowed a subdivision through a building that doesn't meet New York State Building Code.
So maybe.
Are we pulling a CO on it, or?
So would it be, would it, it would help me if we put a provision in there that we have the commitment to build the fire, the party wall and comply with the fire codes within the period of, say, nine months from the date of final subdivision approval?
So are there other buildings besides 309, 310, 320, and 320B?
No.
That this applies to?
No, that would be it.
I thought it says except demolition of any building crossing a newly created lot prior to final approval except for these buildings.
Right, this is saying you're restricted from demolition, or it should actually say demolition or construction.
In other words, it's So are there other buildings besides 309, 310, 320, and 320B?
No.
That this applies to?
No, that would be it.
I thought it says except demolition of any building crossing a newly created lot prior to final approval except for these buildings.
Right, this is saying you're restricted from demolition, or it should actually say demolition or construction.
In other words, as long as there's no other buildings crossing a lot line other than these that are accepted.
Yeah.
It should have the other ones at 320A, 320B.
So 320A, that link what I just showed you, 320B, can we make it, say, six months or nine months from the date of the final subdivision approval?
But prior to filing the map, or after filing the map?
Well, we, we only have six months after approval to file the map, right? Is that, isn't that?
So you actually want to complete the subdivision, filed map, new deeds, and not have met New York State Building Code because you're intending to demolish one side or both sides of the building that's?
Well, at that time, I believe, is, I think we put a note on the plan per Joe Dennis that they would have to come in for a building or a demolition permit, that there are other permits that they need to obtain from the town in order to do any construction site, I believe.
Yeah, you get any permits, yeah.
So, so that it's not that the town would lose an opportunity to regulate the activity on the site. Or, you know, they would still, that's, that's actually the note that I put on the subdivision plan per Joe Dennis, was that any applicable permits need to be obtained prior to any activity.
Do we remove the CO, is, are the buildings occupied right now?
All the buildings are occupied, but there's a minimal number of occupants in those buildings. So like 310 Scott, right now, 310 is, I'll say 95% vacant. There's a few occupants that are in there. The intent is to make it totally vacant, but it's gonna take time to complete the rest of it. So I, I mean, I'll do whatever you, whatever the planning board requests, but it would be, give me a little bit more flexibility if I had a provision in there to complete the party wall and compliance with the fire codes for the separation of the properties. Give me six months, it would give me flexibility if I had six months to do it.
And you're asking for that flexibility because then you would either create the firewall or you would be applying for the demo permit and pull down half or all of the buildings.
Right.
I think as long as it's stated clearly in there, I mean, our remedy, we can issue an order to remedy, we can issue a violation if they're not in compliance and that.
I think my only concern would be if the buildings were occupied, I'd be fine if the CO is pulled and they're not occupied during that period, but if there's, if they're occupied and they don't meet building code and we're knowingly allowing that to happen, I'm not sure that's where we want to be.
What is the use changing?
Well, I'm gonna, the plan is for me to vacate the rest of building 310 and then take it down. That's the plan. But, so that one, I wouldn't have the concern relative to the safety of the occupants because I'd have most of them out of there. The concern that I would have would be that 320A link with 320B because there will be people in those buildings and that.
And are you also planning to demolish one or?
No, no.
So that needs to be constructed then prior to the?
You mean a firewall, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, you need to meet New York State Building Code for a building that straddles two lots prior to receiving final subdivision approval. Definitely for the one where both sides, I'm calling it sides, you know what I mean? Where both buildings are gonna remain in existence post-subdivision. I understand what you're saying for 309 and 310.
Except that it would only be, there would be no, there would be a fire exit there until such time I built the party wall. The only restriction that would be in place for the interim period of time is it would be two separate properties. Follow what I'm saying?
No.
So.
That's more probably because I don't know what the required New York State Building Code is than you're not explaining it well.
So I hear him talking to somebody about it, but, so I've got, I've got two separate buildings that are connected today and they're owned by Global Foundries.
Okay.
Tomorrow, one building will be owned by Global Foundries and the other one will be owned by somebody else.
Right.
So the same fire emergency exits are in place today that will be tomorrow up till such time that I build the separation between the two.
When, when ownership changes, or?
Well, some.
But I think what we're saying, but I think what we're saying is that either you're, you're separating the two so that the lot line doesn't bisect the building, or you have to meet state building code prior to having your final subdivision approval. And Scott, it sounds like you were.
Yeah, I just spoke to Tom on it, I got ahold of Tom, so the thought was, and I think you just touched upon it, as, as long as it remains common ownership, okay, there's not gonna be an issue, but you have to get this done prior to a transfer. It'll be flagged, it'll show up in a municipal search that, you know, if you go to close, it's gonna be flagged that you're not compliant until that work is done, so Tom was comfortable that it just has to be done prior to transfer of ownership, but as long as it's common ownership and you're not changing the use. You could have ninety days, I mean, how much time do you need? Six months?
So then Scott, what I would recommend is maybe we remove?
Six months?
I, I'd feel comfortable with six months, that'll give me adequate time.
Okay, and prior to transfer of ownership for that, that particular unit.
I'm sorry, hold on. I'm gonna suggest that this isn't then a condition of preliminary subdivision, this will become a condition of final subdivision, right?
No, no, it'll be a condition of them being able to transfer the property without it being flagged.
Which they can't do until they have final subdivision approval?
Right.
Which, why wouldn't this then become a condition of final subdivision approval?
Yeah, because they don't wanna wait six months to do, we're right back to the same thing, waiting six months to get final.
Could, I don't need to throw a monkey wrench into the whole discussion.
Because in other words, if they have eight lots, we're gonna hold up the subdivision.
Right now they have zero lots because this is preliminary approval, they can't, they have one lot.
Right, but when that final comes, if that demo isn't done and they wanna sell off one of those pieces, this is, this is gonna hold up everything else on that site there.
That's why I'm saying, why wouldn't we be striking this and making this a condition of final that gives them the additional time post-final approval, filing of the subdivision plan to complete that demolition? I don't see where this becomes a condition of preliminary subdivision approval.
Are you okay with a condition of?
No, because, because, no, because it's got a.
I know what you're saying, you want to make it a condition of final, you're trying to give more time, but, but the question is, is the demo gonna be done before you sell off the first base?
They need to subdivide and then take the wall.
The way I've got it set up is.
But Michelle, the subdivision doesn't happen because we're giving preliminary approval, the subdivision happens after we give final approval. So a final approval acknowledges that they have to maintain ownership of these two lots until such time as the buildings either have the appropriate building code met or they have demolished one.
But I think you're wanting to transfer ownership before.
Yeah, right, because the way I've got it set up is the new owner of the six parcels that are being subdivided off, Global Foundries is gonna retain two, the Core One and the Transportation Corporation to treat the waste. The rest of them are gonna be sold to the Brownfield Developer. The obligation for the Brownfield Developer will be to demolish those two buildings. So he's not gonna demolish the two buildings until he has ownership, right?
Well, then your other option is to vacate.
I can vacate.
And let us remove the CO.
Vacate and remove the CO?
Yeah.
But I can't vacate 320A link with 320B until I build the party wall.
Right.
But, but where we began this discussion, I think, was that you can't have a lot line going through buildings that are connected, was.
Without meeting New York State Building Code requirements.
Without meeting their code, I mean, the, the fact that a line goes through a building in itself is not a problem in, in the special permit situation here, is that correct?
Not to my knowledge, but there's still state building code requirements that you have to meet in order to maintain a CO.
Through this action, we don't wanna violate state building code though.
Okay.
We don't wanna be in non-compliance through this action.
And it may actually be a condition of the special permit that you have to meet, but I'll check that in the language.
I think it's open, Michelle.
So your deal is that the buyer builds the firewalls?
No, I'll build the firewalls, but the, the buyer will do the demolition. So that takes care of the one case, but it doesn't take care of the other case where I'm gonna have occupant, occupancy on both sides.
Continued occupancy throughout the duration of your ownership and the next party's ownership.
Right, right. So the, I'm not concerned about the demo buildings, it's more I'm concerned about the occupied spaces that are connected.
And you're concerned about getting then the firewalls in, in those?
Well, for the interim period of time, there'd be no barricade, so the emergency exit still would be in place for both Global Foundries and the buyer. Right, the real separate, it would just be a legal separation that he owns one side, we own the other.
Kind of, kind of like what happens in New York City, that, that sort of situation with connected buildings happens all the time.
Zero lot line, right.
Right. So.
But there's still building codes that have to be met when you have zero lot line. Right.
So the emergency exits would be there, it's just the legal separation would indicate that one party owns one side and another party owns the other side.
Let's just give Michelle one sec, I wanna see if it's a requirement of the special permit before we go too far.
Yeah, let me read the rest of the one. Scott, just a clarification on 12, so it says, prior to final approval, all lots will be shown to be serviced by separate utility supplies, it says electric and gas. So it'll be electric and gas, chilled water, hot water, gases, and all other utilities, so.
Yeah, that could be.
So when it, so when it says to be shown, what, what does that mean? Does that mean a letter saying they are all being serviced by separate?
Is that just a note, or does it mean show all the utilities?
I think that's for you to demonstrate, however, in what fashion you wanna demonstrate it.
I mean, I mean, currently they're all, all the infrastructure is servicing the buildings and there's not a cha, there's not, we're not talking about a change.
There'll be no change.
But specifically, like, take electricity.
The concern was you can't resell electricity, right? So how are you, and we thought you were gonna have separate meters.
Gonna have separate meters, but not, not immediately upon the subdivision or the transfer. Expectation is that that'll occur in a period of time, six to nine months. Because he's not gonna, he's, the Brownfield Developer's not gonna go install transformers, meters, and create the separate electric connection until he owns the property. He won't, he won't invest the money.
So that would be a burden on your purchaser, not something that they're requiring as a term of purchase?
So, but the expectation is in the draft contract that I got set up that he will do that within a period, a reasonable period of time, like six to nine months.
You don't intend to continue to provide utilities free of charge to the other lots?
Um, it won't be free of charge, it would be engineering algorithm that says, hey, based on the fact that this is office, this is warehouse, this is raised floor.
But I think what Scott's saying is that we need to make sure that there's a way that you're not selling power or some, or, or other utilities to these other lots, that they are going directly to whatever the source is of that power.
How about for both of these, 11 and 12, we just make as a condition similar to these, similar to water and these other issues, that prior to final, they will submit a more detailed demo plan for our review and approval and a separate utility plan for our review and approval prior to final. So we can just move forward on these, because it sounds like these are two things that we gotta maybe work out, work out a few more details.
Yeah, I think so.
But we can just, just rewrite this to say that they have to provide us.
All right, I'll work on that, Michelle, can you just, before we go down that path, if Michelle can just confirm for us whether we have to do this as, before we can issue the special permit?
Yep, I'm trying to find it.
Scott, I'll just draft up some language really quick.
Yep. Scott, just clarification on 13, all requirements of previously approved site plan will be continued and maintained, does that mean the one from like 1984, you know, prior to 1984?
Whatever exists, currently exists, yes, so that would cover your parking, that covers?
So it's everything from the existence of the campus?
Or, or all previous obligations that are still in effect?
Right.
Based on previous site plan approvals?
Right, doesn't mean you have to open up a traffic light that's been shut down for ten years, it just means you know, your parking and, and anything else that you currently have intact, you're not modifying that as a result of this action. Unless, unless, you know, implicitly stated here.
Can, can we sort of clarify this number 13 then to say all requirements of previously approved site plans which are still in effect, or?
Enforce or whatever, whichever.
That makes sense, I guess.
Because there's probably a lot of site plans that were approved that may, have no import on the site now, right? I mean, that whole buildings, whole sections of the site have been removed and something else has been built.
So are you saying you don't have a current site plan? Because what we're saying is you have a current site plan and that site plan is going to continue despite the fact that you're carving it up into eight lots right now. That's all that we're intending to say here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get clarification, like Scott, when we talked about the 1984 site plan for the West Campus, it included some obligations on the East Campus to widen the road and to keep that road open.
Okay.
So is that the stuff that we're getting into, or?
It's just more of a general statement, really.
Bob, we can wait till two weeks from Tom Wood is here, or we can accept this. I'll leave that in your decision. Here.
Well, or, or could we just tweak the language a little bit to just say that?
We're gonna tweak much without Tom approving it though.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, go ahead and propose what you wanna say, go ahead and say what you were gonna say.
All requirements of previously approved site plan that are in effect will be continued?
Mm-hmm.
If we changed previously approved to say existing site plan, would that work?
Yeah, that, that would probably be better because previously approved is a really large.
You've probably had fifty previously approved site plans, we're intending to say whatever your existing site plan is, Scott, is that okay with you?
Fine with me.
Okay.
That work for you guys? It addresses the nuance that I think you're concerned about, that there may be some prior plan that's been superseded by something else?
Yes, that's right.
Provisions that I'm not aware of.
Let's just change that to say, instead of previously approved, we'll change that to existing.
Good, good.
All right, let me run 11 by you, applicant shall provide construction or demolition plans to address any lot line encroachments. This'll be prior to submission for final approval of your subdivision.
Could you say that once more, Laurie?
Sure, applicant shall provide construction or demolition plans to address any lot line encroachments, I should say of the buildings. Of the buildings on site.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
Does that work? That way you can work with our professionals to figure out how that needs to happen.
Scott, you're good with that?
Yep. Before final.
I think that would be better.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, that's good.
I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm done.
This is my own little world, I was just going off.
No, it's fine, carry on.
All right, so then number 12 would become applicant will provide defined plans for separation of the utilities including electric, gas, and you named a couple other things, hot water, I missed all the other.
Chilled water, hot water.
Okay.
Et cetera.
Et cetera.
I would say all utilities supplying buildings which include electric and gas.
Okay, and that may even just become a layer of your plan, or, I, I don't know, I'm not sure how you wanna, or if it's a written narrative how you're intending to do it or a part of a sales contract, we just need to understand how that's gonna happen.
Right now, the thought is a written narrative would be the description.
I'm not being specific here, I'm saying applicant will provide defined plans for separation of utilities, you can decide how, what defined plans mean and just work with our professionals to, to get there.
And I think Scott, you've been comfortable with the narrative approach before? With the exception of the water in the sewer?
Let's see the narrative.
Okay.
We'll start there.
Okay.
So, I'm just gonna read it one more time, applicant will provide defined plans for separation of utilities including electric, gas, chilled water, hot water, et cetera. And again, this would be prior to the submission for final approval.
Yeah, I don't know, defined plans for separation, that's, that sounds like major engineering.
But I think that that's what, you know, your work.
I didn't mean plans as a formal word, I meant
level of detail you want.
Define intention or define commitment to, something, we, we need to know that you're not gonna be selling electricity or hot water or whatever it is to your other lots.
My suggestion is then, why don't we say words like that, so?
That the applicant.
All utilities supplying the existing buildings will be continued to be supplied under the current methodology.
We're not gonna get to that right now though. That might be in your plan that you're gonna submit, but we're not gonna, we put that. that language in there.
So, okay, so then, go back to Lori's language and say, "With the exception of electric and gas, which will be separated."
How, let me try to make it easier, hold on. "Applicant will provide explanation and intention, uh, explanation and details for separation of utilities."
Separation of those utilities which must be separated.
Because not everything is going to be separated.
It's got to be separated, that's right.
The only ones I'm going to separate.
Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just too many people talking.
So what you said was perfect, except that, "For those utilities which need to be separated."
For all utilities requiring- Details for separation.
That's good.
For, how about for required separation of utilities?
No.
For all utilities requiring separation. All utilities requiring separation, fine with that. All right, hold on, I got to write it, I messed that up. Sorry, hold on, hold on.
Good recommendation, Michelle.
"Applicant will provide explanation," I'm sorry?
I was talking to them. They're getting this down.
They just expect me to have legible handwriting, which is, you know, 50/50 at best. "Applicant will provide explanation and details for separation," sorry. For all utilities. For all utilities requiring separation. Requiring separation.
Got a recommendation, Joe?
Such, and I'll just say, "Such as electric, gas, water, et cetera." Is that sufficient?
Yes, that sounded fine to me.
Do you want me to read it one more time?
Are you okay with that?
Read it, please.
Uh, yeah, if you could, sorry, I was-
No, that's fine, one more time. "Applicant will provide explanation and details for all utilities requiring separation, such as electric, gas, chilled water, hot water, et cetera."
I think that's okay.
Yeah, except in the way you got it written, you've got to just leave electric and gas in there and delete the hot water and the chilled water.
Okay, that's fine, "such as electric, gas, et cetera." And then if there's something else that requires it-
Right, and then Michelle's words there.
You'll work with our professionals.
Separation, okay.
Michelle and Scott, are you, should I read it one more time, are you good?
Yeah, yeah. Read it one more time.
I couldn't tell if it was, yes, I'm good, or, "Applicant will provide explanation and details for all utilities requiring separation, such as electric and gas, et cetera." And again, this is prior to submission for final approval. The prior to submission for final approval is at the beginning of all of these subject to, so that's, or all of these conditions.
My only question, I guess, after hearing it the last time, is, do I need the word in there, et cetera? I think I'm comfortable with just the words Michelle used there, "all those utilities requiring separation."
"All those" as opposed to "et cetera," yeah, it's a different way of saying it.
Because my thought at this point in time is, the only ones that require it are the ones that are governed by the PSC, which are the electric and natural gas. Right. And then we're good on the sanitary wastewater treatment?
That's separate.
So if I, so if I say, okay, "For all those utilities requiring separation, such as electric and natural gas."
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
And then I took out the "et cetera."
Yeah, that's okay.
If there's a third utility that we're all not thinking of right now, this still allows us to say, we need to understand the separation.
We're required.
Right.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, I know this is a little painful, but it's worth it to go through and-
Oh, yeah, I think we're all in agreement there.
As long as you're okay with us working through these iterations.
I'd rather have agreement now than, you know, having to revisit this.
Scott, Michelle, you're okay?
Okay. Anything with the others, 14 and 15?
Restricted areas, site, both for soil contamination, air quality issues.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Michelle, did you, there's no language regarding building code.
Go ahead.
On 14, the air quality issues, the stuff we're talking about, are we talking about vapor intrusion, or are we talking about Title V air emissions?
Pete, was that in, I thought that was in Joe's letter, didn't he have a comment to what he wanted on the plan for air quality?
Yes, he did. He asked for callouts.
Let's see, what?
Yeah, hold on a second, I got it here. It was in the July 28 letter.
Can I also just direct your attention to page four of the resolution, because this is where we list out the specific waivers that are being granted as a result of the special permit, just make sure that you don't see any glaring omissions while we're looking this up.
The answer would be both.
The deed restrictions, in terms of the air quality restriction, this one, that should be known on plans that are future, used as a new plan.
So maybe then you want to put in there, just to protect the town, soil contamination, vapor intrusion, and/or, right, and/or air quality issues.
Okay.
Apparently, there is some kind of an air quality restriction in your deed restrictions?
So there's IBM deed restrictions, and then I'm going to be placing some additional air quality parameter restrictions on the buyer for two separate additions that'll be quantified on the plans.
Okay.
So, I'm just amending-
There's the existing IBM deed restrictions, and then we're going to further add to those restrictions from a Global Foundries standpoint.
Which is the B1, B2.
But any additional restrictions you're placing, we want to make sure are on the map.
Yes.
So I would just say, "All existing and new."
So, so Joe Dennis had asked in his comments that a note related to-
Yeah, we think that's a good point.
What B1 and B2 constitute, and, let's see, he said, "A note should be added to the plat that states the following: Proposed restrictive use area B1 and B2 are air quality restriction areas that will limit, allow Bland use to industrial use similar to the current use today, and will prohibit commercial uses such as restaurants, retail stores, gyms." This is actually from your people, actually. So anyway, that, from operating in the restricted areas for as long as the chip fabrication remains operational. Anyway, that note, I think I might have mangled it a little bit, is on the plat, was added to the plat, related to, "What are those air quality," or those-
So I think what we're saying is, we want, we want to actually have the areas delineated, not just a note, but actually, if there's a specific physical area, you know, some sort of delineation or shading or something like that.
They have been, they've been on, they've been on really-
And that's fine, you may already be in compliance, but let me just read the condition one more time and make sure you're still comfortable with it. Michelle, I think I got what you said. "All existing and new restricted areas on site, both for, on site for soil contamination, vapor intrusion, and/or air quality issues to be shown clearly on the subdivision map with restrictions on the plan." So both visually on the map and then in your narrative, not narrative, in the notes on the plan.
Right. As to specific restrictions, they're really, the more detailed they're contained in the document that was filed in the county clerk's office that we've submitted, that these are-
And I'm okay with a reference to that document, I mean, that may be the appropriate thing to do on your plan.
Yep, which we've done from the start, also.
Okay.
Because it would, yes, it would probably become a whole nother sheet, map sheet, to just put all that text, so, so, all right, so we're good.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's called the deed declarations.
With some of these conditions, it's our professionals that go through and make sure you've met the conditions, so if you've already talked about some of this with Joe or Michelle or Peter, Scott, it's fine, we just, what will happen is, prior to final approval for your subdivision, we have to make sure all these conditions are met, and the board will look to our professionals to confirm that for us and assist us with that confirmation. So just continue to work with the professionals if you have questions about, do I put it on the plan, or do I put it reference to another, I mean, we're fine with whatever is appropriate and whatever our professionals are comfortable with.
Okay.
Scott, I guess, on number 15, the final plat will indicate any required setbacks from the hydrogen storage facility. What specifically is that referring to? I mean, I know it's referring to the hydrogen facility, but what requirements?
Any required setbacks that might exist. Tell us what those are.
And then, are you okay with the special?
I mean, the regulating agency is who?
NICE Deck.
So I would say, required by NICE Deck.
I'm sorry, it's not-
Required by NICE Deck.
Required by, give me, NY?
It's New York City, D.C.
Oh, NY, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's how, that's how they refer.
Amazingly, I've never heard it said that way.
It sounds like a financial institution.
It was a little frightening for me. All right.
It's okay, that's what we asked for, that's fine. And Martin just looked over the special permit provisions there and said, yes, that
Okay, so I'm going to have him read them first, and then we'll come back to discuss those, but I just wanted you to take a look at them as we do this. Right, so are there any other changes to the conditions of the approval?
Tom went to review the deeds? Well, I put, I didn't, we didn't say anything yet.
Go ahead, Pete.
We were talking before about, if there's going to be new deeds to be filed.
Which there must be with the subdivision, yes.
As part of number 14, that the town attorney should also review those.
14, or would that be 16, a new item?
Uh, you could make it like a new item, if you want.
Actually, I think it was, there was something farther back up in the conditions about, uh...
About deeds?
Yeah. There was the dedication for South Road.
Well, that was for the roads, right?
Right.
But we're talking about actual deed restrictions, so you're going to be drawing up some new deeds, right?
We'll be writing descriptions for the fee roads to be conveyed at some future date to the town.
Well, that's okay, he's got, Tom will, Tom will be reviewing those.
But, uh-
More about soil contamination or the air quality issues?
Well-
The soil contamination is already addressed through the IBM deed declarations in that document.
And that's filed in, with maps, meets and bounds, that's filed in the county clerk's office.
All right, so nothing, nothing is going to change with that?
Nothing's going to change with that.
Okay, so you're going to reference that, and you probably, and you probably did already on your map, okay?
Yes, that's done.
What about the air quality?
And the air quality, that's going to be the additional Global Foundries restrictions on the property just south and west of 330D, and north of 320A, that I think are quantified on the map or the subdivision plat already, that are delineated. Now, we need to maybe elaborate the text on that, as to what those restrictions are.
Right, and so you're right, Pete, a document would need to be filed for those two air quality parcels.
Right.
You're correct.
I'm sorry, just in general, don't we normally have a condition that says the town attorney reviews and approves the revised deeds or the new deeds? I thought we usually have that as kind of a boilerplate for subdivisions.
To get in there.
So, if it's acceptable to you, let me read, uh, condition 16, "Approval of deeds and deed restrictions for the subdivision to be reviewed," I'm sorry, "deeds and deed restrictions for the subdivision to be reviewed and approved by the town attorney." And that's a normal thing for us, anytime documents are being filed to create subdivision in town, we do want the town attorney to review those documents.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. I didn't specifically reference restrict, uh, any specific covenants or restrictions, but if you have them, they would be part of whatever deed you're creating.
Mm-hmm.
So deeds and deed restrictions for the subdivision to be reviewed and approved by the town attorney.
Sure.
Okay, and that's prior to your submission for your final subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's a good catch, thank you, we do normally have that, I think, on all of our subdivision approvals. Okay, any other changes to conditions? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, "Be it further resolved that all terms and conditions of the neg declaration are incorporated herein and made part thereof, and be it further resolved that pursuant to the application's request, and since no major, no new major construction is taking place, the following waivers are hereby granted under the special permit. A, topographic map survey at two-foot contour interval; B, wetland delineation; C, natural features; D, existing structures, drainage systems, wells, septic systems, water lines and sewer lines within 200 feet of the subject property; E, the location and character of all power distribution and transmission lines; F, the location and description of all subsurface site improvements and facilities; and G, map scale of one inch equals 100 feet. Be it further resol-"
Hold on, just pause there, any changes or amendments to that? And did you have a chance to read, read through them? Any questions? Okay, all right, you're all set.
"Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized members of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner."
Thank you, John. Do I have a second for the moment?
Second.
I have a second from Teresa, votes as follows, John Cutler?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
And myself, aye, the motion carries. Okay. So you have a few things to work with our professionals on, and with regard to the decision for the IBM groundwater treatment facilities, I think, have you spoken with our professional? I think there's a couple things that we need for the plan before it can be finalized. So we'll schedule that on the next available agenda, once we have the information that they're looking for, to make sure that, because you don't have a preliminary approval for what, for the IBM application.
It would request to be on the agenda for September 6.
We'll put it on the next agenda as soon as we know we have, I think, Michelle, did you-
We were looking for the final, right? Final agreement?
Yeah, that's, they're wanting the final agreement for the, that you have an intent for right now, to make sure that the process treated waters are reused, so we want a final agreement before you say final.
Okay.
Okay. We would just need the information in the office.
We'll put you on the September 6 meeting, as long as the, the planning office receives the copy of that document with enough time to review it, so that gives you about a week, week and a half to get it submitted to us.
Are there any other items, just a final agreement?
That's all.
Okay.
Right now. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
If I could do that document there, I appreciate that.
I apologize that we, because our town attorney was on vacation, we normally would like you to have it ahead of time, and we did our best to have it ready, but thank you for walking through it.
Thank you for doing that so quickly.
Sure. Okay, great, thank you. All right, the next item, oh, I'm sorry, before we go to the next item on our agenda, let's, Michael, if you want to come up and let's, do we have Steve and Craig, I think, are waiting in the wings somewhere, right, because they're, so all the members of our board that are not recused, rejoin us. And the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Revulow, which is the former Beach subdivision, lot number four on Creamery Road. Mano?
Is that raining again?
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Just give us one moment, we have a couple more board members that'll join us now, we had a few folks.
Go sit down again.
Say it again?
Do you want to go sit down?
No, just give us, stay right there, just give us one moment, and then we'll-
I can move down to the end.
Do you want me to look back?
Are you playing Steve tonight, or are you playing Mike tonight?
This is where the seats, this is where the sign was, so.
Is Steve here, or are we? Oh, he's not, oh, okay, then we can, we're okay to, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. Okay, that's fine. We're still good.
You're here.
So we've had, we've had the members of our board join us, were able, so you have, you've submitted a request for a minor change to your subdivision, with, specifically with regard to the driveway location on this lot. Do you want to just give us a little bit of information, and hopefully, have you been given copies of the comment letters the planning board has received? Okay, from the highway department and from our professionals? Okay, so go ahead and tell us why you're looking to make the change and what you're looking to do, and then we can talk about the comment letters.
Where we have the driveway is dangerous, because I was on the property a few weeks Where we have the driveway is dangerous, because I was on the property a few weeks ago just walking around, looking around, and I look up onto Shag Bark and I hear brakes like... And I look out and I see a, uh, a landscaping truck, it's a six-wheel dump truck. Has a box trailer behind him. He's getting out and he's taking his, uh, his zero turn and he's cutting grass on Creamery. And I hear, uh, I hear brakes jamming coming up the hill.
A lot of weight trying to stop these.
Like a lot of weight. And I look out and there's an oil truck. Sees this guy at the last minute and he's jamming his brakes on not to hit him. And on the left side is a car coming up on the opposite way. And the truck is taking about 60% down the road. And just a few more seconds, it would've smashed him, it would've smashed the car coming up. And God forbid my wife, my granddaughter, or my daughters coming out of that driveway. Would've been horrible. And, uh, I was a school bus driver. And coming down that hill, especially in the wintertime, even when they clean it, I'm driving, you know, the 40 footer and, uh, it's always a little slippery. Coming out of that driveway, you look around, you see these trucks, I mean, the trucks coming down, the cars coming down, and it's a dangerous situation. And now, if we put it on Creamery, when you come out, it's flat. Creamery is flat, you can see 400 feet in both directions and it's very, very safe. And he was saying something about the water in the retention pond.
Right.
I've been driving by that area for, I'd say, 15 years. And I've gone there in hurricanes for just about, when I was driving the school bus picking up the kids. There's never a drop of water in that retention pond, never. And he was worried about contaminating Creamery Road. And I've never seen anything coming out onto Creamery Road, ever. And we're gonna put up this silt fence and it should really be no problem. It's a very safe way to do it on, on Creamery. And it's, uh, it's a great way to do it for everybody.
Even after heavy rainstorms, it's bone dry.
Bone dry. We go there during a rainstorm.
I went on there purposely.
And the ground is dry. I mean, there's no runoff and it's a perfect, and, and the soil is terrific. So I don't see where they say that there's a problem with the runoff with the rain, because there really isn't. And the pond is always dry. There is never any...
I don't remember it being an issue with the pond. What I recalled was it being an issue of the culvert that crossed Creamery and there being concern that with the driveway cut-in that there was gonna be issues with the culvert being clogged or not functioning properly. It was already not functioning properly at the time the applicant was before us.
I don't really know. I'm not familiar with that part of it, but, uh...
Um, but with regard to Shag Bark, the, at the time the subdivision was approved, all the driveways would've met site distance requirements and would've met the setback requirement from an intersection, so Shag Bark and Creamery have, are in an intersection. So there's a lot of other houses that have their driveways on Shag Bark. I'm just, are we...
Oh, they're way up further.
We're at the bottom of the hill.
We're at the very bottom.
At the very bottom, where it's really dangerous. You have cars, when you look to the left going up the hill, it's maybe 100 feet you can see. And if people are coming down that road fast, which they usually do, you have oil trucks, you have UPS trucks, uh, you have so many commercial vehicles coming down that hill. And they come down pretty quick. And if it's raining, they're sliding. If it's snowing, they're sliding.
Is there a stop, stop at the bottom or is it a yield?
I think there's a stop at the bottom, if I'm not mistaken.
There's a stop at Shag Bark onto Creamery?
Yeah, yeah, but that's after the driveway. The driveway comes out here and the hill comes down this way and Creamery is right here, maybe 75 feet from where the driveway would come out. And it really is pretty dangerous.
Do we have the comments from our traffic engineer from the highway superintendent? I'm sorry, I'm not seeing them and I forgot to bring them with me, Pam. My apologies.
Here's...
There is another issue, if I may, when you're ready.
So the comments from our highway superintendent say a couple of things. If the driveway is constructed as proposed to Creamery Road, it will give a water course directly off the driveway to Creamery Road. And if the driveway is constructed as proposed and we have a major rain event and if there overflow, overflow weir from infiltration basin tops, it will dump directly onto the proposed driveway and have a flow path to Creamery.
Okay, like I said before, there's never any water in that basin, ever. Even during big, huge storms, there's never any water in there, ever.
I, and I, I didn't, I didn't look at our prior, uh, prior approval, but I seem to remember there was concern that there was existing water issues there that were primarily the result of the culvert being clogged with runoff and things like that. And that's why we didn't wanna cause any additional issues.
I've been going to bike there for 15 years now with the school bus and there was never anything in that pond, ever. During heavy rainstorms, it's, you know, it's nothing.
I thought there was a provision in here that said if there was a change proposed, there would be, um, an engineering study done on the, uh, the drainage.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
It was also said that the, would require the approval of the highway superintendent?
Right.
It also says the highway, that the driveway is already there. Is that correct?
No.
Which driveway?
No, no, I think that was, uh, there was maybe a misunderstanding. I think there was a path cut from Creamery onto the property. Is that correct? To do some sort of work on the site, but it wasn't the actual driveway being constructed. It may have been in the, roughly the same location, but it wasn't...
I just did it so I could go onto the property with the car and just take, I just cut down some weeds.
Scott, if I'm saying that wrong, correct me, but I...
Or less covered it, yeah.
Yeah. The highway superintendent specifically says, um, the East Fishco Highway Department denies the request to relocate the driveway entrance to Creamery Road at this time. I'll be, I'll be frank with you, I'm not inclined to change that decision without some sort of study or look again within the plans, which would mean you would need to submit an application for a, for a change.
I don't quite understand that.
In other words, we have to go, yeah, research it further and have somebody come in there and really assess it.
When we have the highway superintendent and we have our professionals and we also have a, a comment letters from our professionals advising us not to make this change, this isn't something we can just do by motion or anything like that. We would need more information and we would need to understand.
I went to see him and the first thing he said was, "I don't want any driveways, I need more driveways on my road." I said, "You gotta be kidding me." I says, "Why, why is it your road? Why don't you want more driveways on your road?" I said, "This is a safe place to do it. You don't want more driveways on your road?" He says, "Well, that's, you know, that's how it is."
I'll just read the third thing that he put in his email, cause I think it addresses what you're saying. He says, "The East Fishco Planning Board approved the driveway to exit onto Shag Bark. This is a secondary road and it's not a, considered a feeder road as Creamery is classified. As such, keeping driveway cuts off feeder roads is imperative." So I think that's probably similar to what he said to you, that he doesn't want additional traffic coming into the feeder roads except at the actual intersecting roads themselves. Cause they're already a high-traffic road, where Shag Bark has very minimal traffic. Creamery does not.
Not lazily. I mean, you see those trucks coming up and down that road and the cars coming up and down that road. It's quite a few.
Is, is Shag Bark connected to another road or is it a dead end?
It's a common sap with all the big houses up on the top.
So the traffic on Shag Bark has to be significantly less than the traffic on Creamery?
Of course it's less, yeah, but it's not that much, so, cause you have the big trucks coming up and down. You have your oil trucks, you have your, uh, UPS trucks, you have, uh, the post office trucks, you have, uh...
But you would, you would agree that the volume of traffic on Shag Bark is significantly less.
We're not stopping short to get some, they're going, it's okay, you see it, like, you know...
They're doing 40 miles an hour, 35, 40 miles an hour. And if you're doing that coming down that road, coming down Shag Bark, it's a dangerous situation. If you were to take a look at it and you were to go there and you would observe...
I've been there.
You would see how you'd have to come up. And he has a dry well on one side of the driveway, a culvert going under the driveway, a, uh, a dry well on the other side of the driveway going into the, uh, the basin. I mean, it's so involved that it's, it's ridiculous, as far as I'm concerned. And just coming out of there on a flat road is not a problem. And when you come out of where...
It is a problem, though, for the, for the highway department and, and for our engineers who are advising us that it's better to have driveways on lower traffic streets, so, um... I, I guess I would look for the direction of the board. I, I'm personally not comfortable making a change to the plan. As it's written, we're, we're being advised by several professionals not to, but if so...
Well, first of all, there were a lot of unanswered questions. The site, the offset distance from intersections, I think, was...
To Creamery, I didn't, I didn't see whether or not it met any requirements, because the highway department told us they were denying it, so I didn't look further, honestly.
So, so again, there's a lot of open switches here. I don't see where we can approve this without... There's a lot of unmet conditions and unmet approvals, so...
Do you own this land or are you buying this land?
I own it.
You bought it knowing that that's where the driveway was, though?
Yeah, yeah. But I bought it with the intention of trying to change it, because it was a dangerous, you know? And the more I was there, the more dangerous I could see that it is. And when I, when, oh, when you come out on Creamery, it's not a problem at all, cause you could see 400 feet in both directions, east and west, without a problem at all. And the cars don't come flying by there. And when you come out on Shag Bark, you've gotta wait, you've gotta listen, you gotta see who's coming around that turn coming down that hill. And the hill is pretty steep. And when you see a UPS truck, or an oil truck especially, coming down that hill and you have your, uh, your other trucks and your, uh, your other equipment coming down there, uh, when they're on Creamery, they're going straight.
It's the culvert.
And there's not a problem, because it's a flat road. But coming down that hill... Yeah, but I think that's for this truck.
The contrast between me coming in and out of my driveway as opposed to how many things come down that road and the kind of winters that we have is just, there's no comparison.
It's very dangerous.
It just, it is, it's very uncomfortable.
Whatever the highway department says.
We didn't realize until we were there. And then also too...
I've been there.
I've had, I have medical issues with my back and if I have to walk to my car to leave on the end of the driveway, that driveway's gonna come like this now. So I'm gonna have to go up an icy thing to get into my car, to get onto a road and worry about that at the same time, whereas just walking right out straight and going, huge difference. I mean, that's just, that is something that I really have a concern about.
Again, this, this isn't a, this isn't a minor change that this board can approve for you tonight.
Right, I understand.
If you wanna pursue this, I guess, Michelle and Peter, I would, I would look for your direction, what the next step would be. Is it a formal application? And then we would determine what type of study is needed for traffic and site distance and all? I mean, there's, it's not a small change when we're being advised against it.
Well, the thing is, the highway superintendent, I would say he's probably the ultimate authority. I mean, if there's specific reasons that he has that he doesn't, you know, want it, he, he wants to keep it where it is on the approved, approved plat. I mean, I'm not sure that the applicant can really submit anything that would, that would...
That would change the location or change the...
Well, they'd have to have some kinda engineering, I guess, justification, either why that driveway's not safe or why the drainage isn't necessary. I mean, the burden would be on them.
And the distance from the intersections, um...
It's close, I think, from what Joe says.
I think it's about 75 feet from, actually, 50 feet.
It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be 125.
Oh, yeah, okay, it's, but it's a really dangerous situation, because I've been there on the property and I hear those trucks coming down that road.
Well, he doesn't have to live there, so he doesn't have to care. That's what, I know I have kids and it's a big deal.
We have children coming out there, you know? It's a dangerous thing.
Being there and hearing it and imagining ice going up the driveway and down and trying to get out while this is going on is just ridiculous.
And I was driving the school bus. I was coming down that hill. Even when I come down, well, you always come down slow.
Cause I didn't care until I saw this.
And rain. And I didn't think it was that bad when I first bought the property. But staying there and listening and seeing, see how people block the traffic. They put their trucks on the side roads and...
You're saying staying there so the house is constructed?
No, it's not there.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying. That's we're waiting to do everything so we can do something about this.
That's what I was...
It's, living there is ridiculous. If I would've known that, I never would've done this.
I'm cleaning some shrubs out. I'm, you know, doing a few things and...
But I just wanna, I mean, you, you had the site plan approval, the subdivision approval when you purchased the property.
I didn't think it was this bad. I thought that was okay.
You know, it seemed fine.
But being there, you know, like eight hours, seven hours... You hear a lot of things going on. You hear brakes screeching. I can see parking, you see people double park, you know, double parking there with their trucks, with the utility trucks. It's really a dangerous situation. It really is. And if I knew it was that dangerous...
I never would've done that. Oh, hell no.
But being there, it has to be seen. And probably when you go there, there'll be nothing there.
Pretty easygoing. This is not good.
Well, I'm familiar with Shag Bark and I don't see significant traffic on Shag Bark. I agree, I'm sure there are trucks there periodically during the day, but it's not traffic like you have on Creamery, where there's really pretty much consistent traffic there.
Sure, no, it's not even the amount, it's the type of traffic. It's how the traffic is flowing.
When you come out on Creamery, you could look both ways. And you can, and you can more or less see how you're gonna come out. When you go on, when you exit on Shag Bark, you have to go up the hill. And what if you're icy and you're gonna slide back down? You gotta come back up again. You have to look both ways. You have to look up that hill. And if you start coming out and you start to skip and somebody comes down that road, they're gonna slam right into you. And I've been there and I've seen it. I didn't see it happen.
You've seen accidents on Shag Bark? Cause we can pull that information, you can pull that information.
You can foresee this being an issue, sure.
What could happen there, because when you're going up that hill on the driveway and if the driveway is icy and you start sliding back and you start coming out, let's say you start coming out and you hit the ice and you start skipping.
I understand what you're saying.
It's coming down that road. It's very dangerous.
I understand what you're saying. Um, Michelle and Scott, I, I don't know what the next step would be for someone who wants to pursue this, cause I, the planning board has...
Probably have to find out. They'd probably have to retain an engineer. Have the engineer talk to the highway superintendent and see what kinda information that the highway superintendent might, might wanna see in order to even consider changing it. And I, I don't know what else I'd...
When I went to see him, he was very excited.
When you got the drainage feature?
He just says, "No."
Adding the distance.
Oh, yeah. But an engineer might...
I reread them. I cannot find the word "close" in any of them, so we need to add, I said, don't forget the distance from the...
Site distance. It's in code, though. The minimum distance is in code.
But it doesn't say "close." Everybody keeps saying, "Well, it's close."
You have to remember one thing, dangerous situation. We're coming out on Creamery. It's not dangerous, cause it's flat. Coming up that hill and people coming down that hill, even if it's one truck coming down the hill, it happens to slide. When my wife, who's a terrible driver, comes out of that, the driveway, she's done.
I'm gonna just, just say it again.
Okay.
This is not something that the planning board can approve right now, because we've been advised by several, but the highway department and our consult professionals that that's, it's not an appropriate change. Now, that doesn't mean that you don't have an avenue, but it means that as of right now, you're asking for a minor modification and it's not.
So what steps do we actually take?
And I'm seeing nods on the board. It's just not something we can approve for you tonight.
So what actual steps do we need to take? Cause we're not going to stop till we get it. What do we need to take?
I think as, as our professional engineer pointed out, you need to retain an engineer to speak with you, the highway superintendent, to find out if there's anything that can be done.
So we have to find an engineer and they need to speak to...
The highway superintendent.
Yes, the highway superintendent has provided very specific information about what is...
Sure. Oh, from his perspective, I can understand it, but he's not living there. I know you have nothing to do with it, but that's a fact. You know, I had no problem either, until I was there a couple times and I was like, whoa, this is not good.
If he would have his family there, coming out on the driveway...
Of course he's gonna say, yeah, he's not ever going there.
You know, when an oil truck is coming down that hill.
I'm just, again, you're asking me what the next step for you would be. That, that would be what we would recommend as your next step.
And then go to the highway department and the whole thing, okay?
And again, that's not a promise that anything can change, but if you're going to find the right path here to, to have a driveway in a different location than what's been approved after the professionals and our highway superintendent have said no, then, then a professional engineer is probably the best person to assess, assist you, excuse me.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
See, his comment just rang in my ear saying, "No, I don't want any, I need more driveways on my road." What the heck kind of a comment is that?
But you gotta understand, it's more than just that, though. This went through a lengthy process, I think, over a year.
2009, 2010.
To get to this point and this approval, so, and he wasn't the highway superintendent at that time. There was a former highway superintendent who made several comments about drainage and entering onto the road, so, yeah, he has concerns today, but his, his, his thought process didn't even factor into this approval. This approval stands on its own. So not only do you have to convince the new highway superintendent that your plan is a good plan, I think you also have to address all the drainage concerns that were vetted during this process as well, so I mean...
When you say drainage, I've been there for a long time and there is...
Well, I understand what, you've maybe never seen anything, but I mean, I can't...
We had, we had...
You were there at times, you weren't there.
We had members of the public that lived in that area.
Engineer will have to be able to demonstrate that through an analysis.
We had members of the public that lived in that area at the time we were reviewing this subdivision that absolutely said there were water problems there, so, um... As a board, we need the review of professionals, we need the recommendation of professionals. If you're going to relocate a driveway, you're going to need to work through the issues that were originally identified as the reason that driveway's not on Creamery today and is actually on Shag Bark. So an engineer would be able to assist you in that process and the review of those, those things.
Well, I went out to the engineers in Beacon, the ones who originally did this. And, uh, they said that, "Oh, we can put the driveway this way and there should be no problem."
So we'll talk to them and then I can talk to them.
Right, and the, the planning office does have copies of all of the information from the original approval, including minutes, the discussion, you, you, all, that you're, an engineer would know what to ask for and be able to kind of work through, here's where the concerns were raised at the time that original subdivision was approved.
So when I go see the engineer, what do I tell him?